I don't know what you'd call them.
Good evening and welcome to everyone to the Muscatine City Council Meeting, April 14th, 2016. We're going to call this meeting to order now. And Fran, would you please do a roll call?
House Members Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Fig.
Present.
Saseyra.
Here.
Bynum.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Fran. Our first thing on the agenda is talking about the Mobile Automated Traffic Enforcement presentation. Thank you.
Would you go ahead and say, start with your name, please?
Sure. My name's Phil Sargent. I'm the Assistant Chief of Police with the Muscatine Police Department. The city administrator asked me if I'd be able to give a brief presentation on the automated traffic enforcement, the history of it, and where we are hoping to move forward with it in the very near future. Let me get the PowerPoint going here real 2009, Mike Scott, who was the Assistant Chief at the time, and I gave a presentation to City Council regarding automated traffic enforcement as a way to do traffic enforcement, both red light and speed, with the hopes of reducing traffic collisions and reducing speed and red light running at various intersections around the city. At that time, we, after making the presentation to the City Council at the time, there was a warm reception to it. They asked us to proceed with it. We sent out RFPs to the vendors and GAZO USA was awarded the contract in March of 2010. During that time, after the contract was awarded, we started writing city ordinance, we started doing site surveys, we started doing speed surveys, red light surveys, and we also looked at all the crash data that we had. In September of 2010, City Council approved the current automated traffic enforcement. Let's see here. There we go. And during, through the site surveys, the speed surveys and everything, the five intersections that are up on the screen right now were chosen for the equipment. That was based on the speed surveys. That was based on the accident reports, based on the red light running, and also based on the physical capabilities of each intersection. One intersection that you don't see up there that we really wanted to move forward with was Fifth and Park Avenue. Because of where houses were, because there is no boulevard really there, the act of putting the equipment at that intersection was going to be so cumbersome and trying to figure it out. We would have had to buy land from current homeowners, houses and other things were in the way. We just couldn't do it. So those are some of the considerations that went into this. We worked closely with the Iowa Department of Transportation, GAZO engineers, and these are the intersections that we came up with. And the two on US 61 were chosen for speed enforcement. As many of you know and remember, Highway 61 had always been kind of a racetrack around Muscatine. At that time that we were looking at this, the business district over by Walmart was just in infancy, but it was starting to grow. Krieger's had decided to move over into that area. We could have an officer sit there at University and 61 all day and just sit there and write tickets. And the speed limit was 45. There weren't any changes to it. We decided that'd be a prime intersection for this. And also, University and, or Mulberry and 61, they put stoplights in. That helped a lot with the traffic crashes. That used to be a big problem. We considered speed enforcement there after doing speed surveys, and we found out that it was still a racetrack even with officers sitting out there and knowing, the public knowing that there was going to be officers there writing traffic citations. In March of 2011, we got four of the intersections up and running. And in May of 2011, Park Avenue and Washington was the last approach that became active. During the first 30 days of each approach going active, there was a warning period where any citations that were mailed out were warning citations. We had a media barrage at the time. We had a public information sessions. We handed out pamphlets. We put up posters. We did everything we could to get the information out there. The other thing that, with working with the DOT, one thing that everyone was worried about, well, we need to make sure we put up plenty of signs on where these are at. Remember this, that we don't put up signs where we have police officers at running radar. We don't have signs going up where police officers are watching stop signs or traffic lights. We put up the signs. We worked with the DOT. The DOT actually put the signs up for us. We also decided to go over and above national standards and at the entrance to the city at every city limit sign, we put the signs you see on the left where it says "Traffic Laws Photo Enforced." We kind of plagiarized that idea from Cedar Rapids. And Cedar Rapids, they were a precursor to us with getting into this. And they said, they thought it made a difference, making sure everybody that came into town knew that these were in use. We worked with the DOT especially on the University and 61 intersection because of where the speed change signs were at and how we wanted to have the intersection set up. The DOT traffic engineers, they designed the intersection. We asked them to move the 45 mile per hour speed limit sign further out. They did that. We told them to put it out at the city limits. They said, no, where they were putting it out, where it was 850 feet before the intersection, that was plenty of room. That's how they wanted it. And that's what we agreed to. The DOT put the signs up. We want to step further, ask them to put ones up on the median, so just like for the 55 and the 65 speed zone further out when the speed changes. What has this done for Muscatine? Our goal was not only traffic enforcement with the speed and the red light running, but it was also to reduce crashes. In 2010, the year before this started, there was 34 motor vehicle crashes at those intersections, just those five intersections. Nine were personal injury, 25 were property damage. By 2015, we're down to 19 crashes at those intersections with only two being personal injury. That's a 78 percent reduction in injury crashes at those intersections. I'd say it's a success just for that.
What was the, what was the last one that PD?
PD.
Pardon?
The last column he's asked.
What's that called?
Property damage.
Property damage.
Property damage and personal injury. I'm sorry.
And how much the difference was that? That was 25, I believe?
There were...
Seventeen?
Yep.
Yeah. 2010, there was 25 property damage crashes, nine personal injury. 2015, five years later, there was 17 property damage and two personal injury.
Thank you.
In 2011, by the time we started, there was only eight months for the program to run. In 2011, there was just short of 20,000 citations that were issued. Now, if you extrapolate that out to a full year, that runs between 27 and 29,000 citations. If this would have been a whole calendar year, that the equipment would have been up and running. Now, one thing I want to mention is with these, the, one thing that a lot of people have said, well, you shorten light times, you do this, you do that. We worked with Power and Water, and Muscatine Power and Water is the ones that set the traffic lights. They're the ones that set the yellow times. And they set them higher than the national average would be. So you actually have a little more yellow time for each intersection than what the national average is. And they say they do that at most intersections just to add an extra buffer zone. Anyways, 2011, there was 19,748 citations issued. 2015, it's down to 14,447. Now, there's a slight rise from 2014 that you'll see there. There was two kind of major incidents that happened from 2014 to 2015. Howser, or I'm sorry, Cedar Street became more open. There was, there was times in 2014 that it was open, closed, open, closed, various parts of the construction going on. Cedar Street opened up again sometime between 2014 and 2015, but more completely opened in 2015. There was increase in citations from that. Also, you had the DOT, the DOT Director issued his statement about the automated traffic enforcement, and we needed to shut down this intersection and such. I do administrative reviews every other Thursday along with Captain Snyder. And the number of times we heard since that happened in May of 2015 that all of these were illegal and the DOT says we can't have them, so they can do whatever they want, was astronomical. And also, the number of people that send in and say that the 850-foot difference between the speed sign and the traffic light, university to bypass, that we can't afford speed there. Right now, as you know, that's kind of all up in the air. It's on hold. The rules aren't binding at this time. But those are two things that kind of gave, gave more traffic on Cedar Street, and you also gave people the idea, the idea that these don't apply anymore. That's, we saw a big jump between May and June. And then it kind of slowly started to trickle off more information that was gotten out about that, those concerns about the DOT rules.
Phil, I don't know if you're going to mention it later, but in case you're not, how do the citations stack up comparatively between the different sites? I would assume that they all don't get the same amount of citations. So some are worse, some are less, have less. Like, University and Mulberry probably have more.
University and Mulberry, they tend to have more. Some of the others, like Cedar Street and Howser, they have a lot more red light running than what they do speed. University and Mulberry, they have more citations just based on the sheer volume of vehicles traveling that roadway. And each year, if you look on the city's website, each year, we post the information we send to the DOT. That DOT report for each intersection has a breakdown of year to year of the number of citations that were issued. For each intersection, it breaks it down by red light and speed. So you can look at comparisons between that.
I have the current draft from Phil. I believe it'll be going out Friday in my, in my update. The update that you provided, is that the final version?
Yes.
For submission to the yes.
That'll be, I'll be submitting that to the DOT tomorrow.
Okay.
And after I submit it, we'll be asking John Cruzenstein to put it up on the city's website.
And Phil, can you please mention Sioux City? Because they did an actual test on the subject as well.
After, it was either after or before, I'm not sure of the exact timeline, but they have, they have a number of mobile speed enforcement there, and they use it a lot in construction zones on I-29. Well, they made, made a public statement through the media that they were shutting it down for two weeks. Within two days, they saw an astronomical climb in the amount of speed violations because the equipment was still running. They just weren't issuing the citations. It was still collecting, I'm sorry, it was still collecting data. They saw an astronomical increase in it. And then they made that information known. I don't have the exact numbers, but they, they said, you can see that as soon as they know it's not there, people are going to speed up. And if you look at number of the studies that have been done, there's one study in particular by the Iowa State University, the Center for Traffic Research and Education, that they, number one, they surveyed traffic experts, and they recommended increased usage of automated traffic enforcement. They also recommended, which is kind of what the cities have done in some ways, is take the traffic code, take it out of the criminal realm, put it in administrative realm, and don't have it where, except once you get above a certain level, to where you have the threat of a jail time or anything like that. And that's kind of what we've done is made it into a civil infraction. The other thing that they did was they surveyed people in Iowa. And 83 percent of them that surveyed said, if they know automated traffic enforcement is in place in the city, they slow down and they drive better. There was 55 percent of the respondents that recommended automated traffic enforcement for speed on highways and 56 percent that recommended automated traffic enforcement for speed in cities. 70 percent recommended automated traffic enforcement for red light running. So, and those, all those, there's been other studies that have been done by Iowa State University. They've all been in support of the automated traffic enforcement programs. And they've all been paid for by the Iowa Department of Transportation. There's been other ones like the Insurance Institute that also have seen favorable outcomes for automated traffic Where are we looking at going from here? The department would like to explore mobile speed enforcement with either a vehicle or a trailer. That's an unmanned vehicle, unmanned trailer. We put it in places, there might be construction projects, school zones, neighborhoods where there's complaints, anywhere that we feel or the city feels it should be placed for enforcement. The other option we have, and it's really a neat, neat piece of equipment, is a handheld laser, just like we already use, but it has photo enforcement equipment attached right to it. And it attaches up to a computer in the car. Mobile speed enforcement, I'm sure a lot of you maybe in the news have seen vehicles where you have a camera in the window. The equipment that, that monitors all that and takes care of the backend processing is all in the vehicle. The officer takes it out, gets it set up, calibrates it, makes sure it's working. They leave it for 12 hours, 24 hours, however long you want. They come back and get it. It's downloaded either through Wi-Fi or cell data connection or it's plugged in. All that information is processed by the event process company, which is, which is GAZO USA. The other option is a speed enforcement trailer. That is actually the one that's out in Windsor Heights, over by Des Moines. It works in the same way, other than, you can put it in a lot more places than you can a car. Muscatine has some outrageously narrow streets, parking on one side. We already use a speed trailer. One of the directions I'm kind of leaning towards is a speed trailer, because we can put it on a boulevard. We can put it somewhere where a car just isn't going to fit. And especially works better a lot of times in construction zones. So there are two options that we have, two options that we can look at with this.
Phil, question. What's the range on those? I mean, I remember from the police academy, and some of those handheld would go like a mile out or something, or...
Well, what you're thinking of is a laser radar.
Yeah.
The, those all use K or KA band radar, which is just a radar like you'd, like you'd see, you have the cone, and it shoots it up. Typically, they have them set and they have them, they have them targeted within a specific range. But yeah, they can reach quite ways, but they're less effective the further out you get. But usually, we'll have, they'll usually take the radar reading within 50 yards of where they're at. Because by that time, it's already determined whether there's a violation or not, and it's constantly sending out or returning a radar signal. The laser can go a lot longer.
Phil.
Yes?
You mentioned about the trailer. How are we actually looking at what the, the state uses for construction zones? I mean, I see a lot of those, and I mean, you travel and then you sit there and you read, and it says, hey, this is a construction zone, $500 fine if you speed. And everybody's straight and narrow in those areas. Those are driven by the DOT or by construction and the highways and the interstates. Are we, is this similar?
The Iowa Department of Transportation does not have any speed enforcement trailers or equipment at all.
Okay, so then what...
In Illinois, they do. If you travel in Illinois, in every construction zone, you see they have a speed zone and it says "Photo Enforced."
All right.
They, Illinois uses trailers. They use, they have vans. They have vehicles. What this does is you can park this anywhere in a construction zone, anywhere in a school zone, in a boulevard, in someplace that you may not be able to fit a vehicle. And you have a radar and a camera on the front of it. On the back, you can see the typical speed that lights up. You can turn that off. You can leave it on. There's a lot of different configurations you go with.
But these are, these are similar to what Illinois possibly has?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was getting. I was just wanting to make sure that we're not reinventing the wheel or something. We're not going out and purchasing something. We're not reinventing the wheel of any sort. This is something that's out there that...
No. No. This, this is all, there's many companies out there that do this. These are, they've been out there for a long time. There's nothing being reinvented here. And this is all at no cost to the city. We are not buying these. We are not...
It's the fee that we have for the third party.
Well, the third party, GAZO USA, they pay everything up front. And what they get is they get a $27 per paid citation. Every citation that's paid, they get $27 off. That was in the original contract, and that was lower than most, or the other companies that had put in the RFPs at the time. So we get, the city, if it's a $75 fine, it's a two-thirds to one-third, but the fines go up depending on what the speed is. And the equipment is paid for by the contractor, not by us. We would not have a financial obligation outlay for a car or for a new speed trailer.
Okay. Thank you.
Laser radar system, that is fairly new. But when I've seen it, when I've used it, it's actually very ingenious. It's a, it's a regular laser radar manufactured by any one of the companies that are out there, but GAZO marries it to their photo enforcement system. And here, we would have it run by an officer. An officer would be out on normal patrol. They'd be doing speed enforcement just like they normally do. We aren't taking them away from anything that they're already doing. But instead of chasing those vehicles down, getting out with them on bypass, getting out with them, they'd be doing, the citations would be civil infractions. They'd be processed through the GAZO USA processing part of it. The officer at the time would approve the citation. It'd come back. Another officer would look at it, make sure everything was there, make sure that correct information was there, and then another officer would issue the citation out. And it would be a civil infraction as opposed to a criminal infraction. When the officer takes us out, just like they do with a normal laser radar, they would have to calibrate it, get it all set up. They would go, they'd be working their normal patrol. They'd go out, they'd set up somewhere, and they would run radar just like they normally would with a laser radar or with a radar that's permanently mounted in their squad car. This is just doing it in a different fashion.
Still at no cost.
Correct. Still at no cost.
So under that scenario, you anticipate we would eliminate, essentially eliminate the traffic stop altogether?
For the officers that are using this particular laser radar. We aren't ever going to eliminate the traffic stop.
You're going to minimize it quite a bit.
We're going to try and minimize it. We're going to try, number one, it potentially can make the officer's job a little easier, a little safer, because you aren't stopping that vehicle where there's a bunch of other traffic slipping by. The officers that'll be using it will be specific officers that, that volunteer for it, and they'll be trained on this specific piece of equipment. Because there are a lot of steps to it that are different than your regular laser radar. And they would receive certification in it, training, and they'd be ready for court testimony. Similar to like officers are trained in the academy for a regular laser radar, but these are just a little different for them. This is a picture of the system on, the one on the right is where the officers are using it in squad car. You've got the handheld laser unit. You've got the photo radar on the side. The photo part of it has a distance of about 450 feet, which is pretty good for a camera. That's picking up a vehicle either coming at you or moving away from you. And the pictures they take are very good. I went out, I tried one. They zoom in on the, on the license plate, they get a good picture of the vehicle. They have the GPS location of where you're at, speed and everything directly imprinted on the violation. You can also use it in a tripod mode where you put it on a tripod, and the tablet computer that you see underneath there is what actually stores the data. And then it's downloaded either by cell modem, or you bring it back, you plug it in, or you do a Wi-Fi connection at the station. Where are we going from here with this is if we, if and when we move into the mobile enforcement realm, we are going to have to rework the contract with GAZO. Right now, there are no provisions in our contract for mobile speed enforcement. I don't expect major changes to it. I don't expect any changes to the fee schedule, but there needs to be language in there as far as the vehicle, how it'll be used, how often we'll put it out, and just things like that.
Mobile speed is not new to GAZO, is it?
No. No. GAZO's been working in Europe for the last 50 years. GAZO is in the United States for 15 years, I think. They have, they do a lot in Florida. They do some in Illinois. They do four cities in Iowa. But they're, they're very well attuned and very well in touch and in the know with speed enforcement and red light enforcement.
Do we know what DOT's attitude is toward mobile enforcement? Or is it remaining to be seen?
DOT's mobile enforcement attitude, the, I should say, the political spectrum of the DOT. The workers at the DOT, they all support automated traffic enforcement. They were very good when we were working with them.
And they always have. At the engineer level, you're telling us.
Yes. As it sits right now, the mobile speed enforcement, we could not use the vehicle or the trailer on DOT-controlled roadways like Highway 61. In town, we can use it anywhere because they have no control over that. Now, there is a little bit up in the air. Since we're not putting anything on the roadway, we aren't putting a piece of equipment anywhere as far as with the laser radar. Because officers are allowed to run laser, use laser radar anywhere on any of the, any of the streets, whether they're controlled by the DOT or not. So that's another reason why we're looking at the handheld laser radar as an option for this also.
And if we were to proceed with this, how many of each type unit would you envision? Or do you know?
To start off with, I'd only envision one of each.
One of each?
Yes. We need, we had to get our feet wet with the stationary automated traffic enforcement. Our feet are wet, and we can't move forward with anything right now because of the Iowa DOT.
Right.
Mobile speed enforcement, my recommendation is we start off with one of each. We work... We work with GAZO. We see how everything's gonna work with it. We've already talked to other agencies that use this, so we've got an idea, but until we get it, until we get it set up, until we start using it, we don't know all the ins and outs in the particulars. So my recommendation is to start off with, with one of each. Right now, we're working on a year-to-year contract extension with GAZO, and that's worked out fine. But like I said, with the addition of mobile speed enforcement with the equipment and everything, there'll need to be contract changes. So we'll have to come back with a new contract to city council, I believe, to get that approved. The other issue we're gonna... Wrong way. There we go. The other thing we're gonna do, need to do is clarify the city ordinance. Right now, there are no provisions in the city ordinance for mobile speed enforcement. We wanna make sure that there isn't any concern, that there isn't any language problems or any issues when we do start this. So, um, the city's attorney has included language in the mobile, in the automated traffic enforcement ordinance for council to look at at a later date here. The other thing we're asking for is a, is an extra speed category in there, the speed zone of six to ten miles an hour. That's because when we're working in a school zone, when we're working in a construction zone, we typically don't allow eleven miles an hour of the speed limit. You've got these areas that have a lot more danger to them with a lot of people working, kids running around. We narrow that down to six, seven, eight miles an hour of the speed limit. So we wanna add in a zone in the automated traffic enforcement for a fine of sixty-five or seventy dollars for the six to ten miles an hour of the speed limit for those zones. Are there any questions? That's the meat and potatoes of the presentation.
Please come to the podium and say your name, please, and address.
I have a question.
No, that's what I...
Okay. Here's my question, if, if...
Thank you. If by having the...
Who are you?
Oh, hi, I knew.
It's okay, just please state your name and address.
Sure, I'm Angie Overton, I live at seven fourteen West Foleum.
Thank you.
I have one question to ask, and it kind of arrived as you were talking about. If the goal is to change the behavior of the consumer or the person that's, that's here, the nice thing is when you have that flash of light that says, oh crud, I just did something, I need to slow down. What's gonna prevent if the officer's sitting at the side of the room with the laser and the car's still going fast, he's gonna continue on that path unless he's stopped? Or he has some type of visual to say, oh crap, what was I thinking? Or, you know, was I not thinking? That would be my only concern.
The flash that you see only happens at night. The flash does not happen during the daytime. It depends on the ambient light and what's needed by the camera system. The flash is not meant as a behavior modification tool. It is meant to enhance the photo evidence. Behavior modification comes in a lot of different ways, it's in education. It's in influences by whether it's parents or whether it's by law enforcement. But a lot of behavior modifications happen when there is some type of a legal ramification for what you did. Or even if there's a penalty for what you did. People learn a lot from that. So whether it's an officer stopping someone and giving a traffic ticket, or them receiving one in the mail, these are people that are just driving five, six, seven miles an hour of speed limit. They're driving eleven, at least eleven miles an hour of the speed limit. Which, when you're driving eleven miles an hour of speed limit, unless you don't know what the speed limit is, you know you're speeding. So at that time, behavior modification becomes more of we're imposing this on you, so hopefully you change your habits. Whether that's automated traffic enforcement or traditional law enforcement.
Phil, if you run a red light and are speeding, do you get two tickets?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
Good. Because I always thought that if you're running a red light and speeding, man, you're really putting somebody in jeopardy if there is an accident.
Yes. There again, the threshold is set at eleven miles per hour for speeding, so you'd be surprised the number of people that come in when they do the administrative review and said, I couldn't stop for that red light. Well, yeah, the speed limit's thirty and you're doing thirty-five, yeah, you weren't trying to stop. So, yeah, if, if they're speeding at, and they meet the threshold, they'll get a speeding, speeding violation and the red light violation.
Personally, if they were running a red light, I wouldn't give them any leeway on the speed.
Well, the cameras, the, the system has to have a threshold.
Back in two thousand, two thousand and ten, when this was first being considered, I got up and spoke in favor of it just as a citizen and expressed my opinions that I was in favor of it. And I, if I recall right, within the first year after the camera on Iowa sixty-one and University was put into place, the camera clocked the person going through that intersection, which has a speed limit of forty-five, clocked him going sixty miles an hour above the speed limit.
Yes.
He meant him going, that's a hundred and five miles an hour through that intersection. He deserved it. And I doubt if he could say, well, I didn't know the speed limit was forty-five.
I didn't see the signs.
Yeah.
At a hundred, at a hundred miles an hour, seeing the signs would be a little...
I'm all in favor of, uh, traffic control devices.
Any other questions for Phil? Thank you, sir, please come to the podium and say your name and address.
Kurt Piper, two sixteen Rosco. A question I have is on your crash data and your violation data. Crash data shows a reduction over your five-year period, but on your violations, it's only showing a first-year reduction. After that, there's only slight variation. Seems to me that the devices really haven't controlled the behavior. I'm wondering if there may be other things that attributed to crash data other than the speed cameras themselves.
Thank you. Phil?
Well, we don't really have a way to interview people after accidents and ask them what their frame of mind was. However, you're looking at twenty-eleven, we were on par for twenty-seven to twenty-nine thousand citations. Twenty-fifteen, it's still at fourteen thousand, it's keeping them low. What they found nationwide, and if you go, if you go look with the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety, they did a study, it was either in Tennessee or Maryland, where the citations for speed, because they looked at just the speed part, they were kept at a plateau, and we expected things to plateau. We really did. But what they found out there is as soon as they shot them off and pulled them out for a while, and it was an experiment that they did, things went right back up to where it was before. So whether it's the, it's the signs, the threat of a possible violation notice, either one of those, they're, the research they came up with was that there's still a behavior modification part of it to the equipment being there and doing its function.
I would imagine part of the decrease in personal injury was the fact that those accidents, if anything, were at a lower speed.
That could be, yes.
Imagine getting T-boned by somebody going a hundred and five?
I've seen high-speed crashes and they're not, they're not nice.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Phil.
What's your timing about maybe when you might be coming back?
I envision, since the ordinance, I believe, is pretty much completed from the draft portion that I'd have to talk to city administrator, but I don't see why in May or sometime following then, real shortly after that, that we would be able to have that before city council, and if there's no objections to this, I can start working with GAZO and asking them to produce a draft of the contract changes that they would need for this to become, to come to fruition. Now, once we get everything solidified and everything signed, there's about a two-week turnaround for them to be able to provide the radar, the handheld laser radar unit. Probably about another few weeks after that for the training to happen for the officers, and there's also about a four- to six-week turnaround for the vehicle or the trailer. Just because they don't keep those in stock.
There'll be a period of time we have warning tickets going out then, like we did initially on the other photo enforcement?
It's been thought of, um, because with the mobile speed enforcement, what I envision is similar Cedar Rapids where you see it. It's gonna be here on this date, it's gonna be here on this date, it's gonna be here on this date, on the city's Facebook page, on the city's website. There's no reason people don't know it's gonna be there, other than maybe they aren't looking. Whether there is, the speed enforcement for automated traffic enforcement is nothing new. So whether there's a warning, warning timeframe or not, I'm open to it, but I'm not against not having one either. Now, for the laser radar being held by the officer, I don't see a
Yeah.
warning period for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Phil. Next on the agenda tonight, we have our review of airport operations. Adam. Adam, please say your full name for the audience.
Yeah, my name is Adam Thompson, I'm the community development coordinator and airport administrator as well. Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak tonight on the airport. I know we've had a number of council agenda items that have come before council, and there's just been some questions on the airport, how it operates, um, how it makes money, you know, what is the city's role in managing the airport? So, um, we just wanted to give, you know, relatively short, um, general overview of the airport. There is a lot of detail in the work that we do at the airport. You know, if you want to speak to me, you know, and get more detail about it, you know, you're welcome. I'm welcome to share more information and facts with you about the airport. If you guys want to tour the airport, anytime, just please let me know. And if you have any questions as we go through this presentation, please stop and ask along the way. So we're gonna go over, uh, sponsor, so the sponsor is the City of Muscatine. FBO is a fixed base operator. We're gonna go over the facility and what we have at the airport, some of the economics that the airport provides, our five-year plan, our five-year capital improvement plan, as well as kinda what we're looking for, forward to, ten-plus years out, and update, but we're also gonna talk about our future hangar improvement project. Uh, so sponsor, that's a term that's used by the state and the FAA. Essentially, what it means is we are the owner of the airport. We have the ability to obtain funding for airport improvements, funding either through the FAA or through the state of Iowa. It's the DOT. And then, so we manage improvement projects and manage lease of airport facilities and land. Assisting the city with airport operations is our Airport Advisory Commission. And three of them, well, four of them are actually here tonight. In the front court over here, Jerry, you wanna wave? Jerry is our chairperson. He's been on the commission long before I came into the picture. Sitting next to him is Bill Letty, he is the vice chair for the commission. Next to him is a relatively new member, but a very active member, Steve Bradford. And then, we've always had council representation on our aviation commission as well, and Scott Nagvig is a member of that. Previous to him was Phil Fitzgerald. Also on our commission, and not here tonight, is Stacy Lewis. Engineering, so the city has a contract with an engineering firm, we go out every five years or sooner, and we contract with an engineering firm to offer airport engineering. Our current airport engineer is Anderson Bogart, specifically Jane DeCoste with Anderson Bogart. Their purpose is to make sure that we stay within FAA compliance, we stay within state compliance. They plan, uh, projects in, in preparation for that, whether it be the, the five-year CIP or long-range planning. They give us cost estimates so that we know what we're getting into going in the future. Then they also design and do project management for our projects, such as the runway reconstruction project that we are starting on Monday. You know, they do the design and the oversight of that project. And really, you know what's great about them, so we've been with Anderson Bogart for, for quite a while, and you know, I've only been with the city two and a half years, so if I need to know something that happened ten years ago, I can call up Jane, and she worked on it ten years ago. So, so having that knowledge is, is nice. I, I will say here that, that as we, so state funding, federal funding is becoming much more competitive, and you really need to strategically position your airport to receive funding from the FAA and state. So we are investigating the possibility of looking into other firms that may better strategically place us to receive state and federal funding going forward for improvements at the airport. Uh, so our fixed base operator is Carver Arrow, and, uh, the manager of Carver Arrow is Janet Lewis, and Mike is really kind of our point person, Mike Worley. I really don't know what his title is, um, but he's just kinda the, the do-it-all guy at the airport. So, so the role of, a role of an FBO, and there's, there's many of them across the country, but they are a commercial business that are granted the rights by the airport, by the city, to operate the airport and provide aeronautical services, such as fueling, hangaring, tie-down, parking, aircraft rental, aircraft maintenance, flight instruction. Carver also provides, they kinda go above and beyond for us, they also provide light maintenance service, mowing, building maintenance, and security as well. It really is a, a great relationship that we've had with Carver Arrow, and I don't know, we've been with them for, for quite a while as well. And so the city pays Carver Arrow for their FBO services, but Carver Arrow pays the city to rent part of the terminal building so they can operate their FBO services. So there is a, an exchange there between the city as a sponsor and, and the FBO for the services they provide. So the facility. At the airport, we have the terminal building, we have runway sixty-four, which is the main runway. We have runway twelve-thirty, which is the crosswind runway. We have a handful of corporate hangers, T-hangers, and then also a municipal building. And I do want to take, you know, as we're starting to go into, talking about facility, we are having a public meeting at the airport this Saturday at ten AM. The purpose of this meeting is to talk about the upcoming reconstruction project. Gives pilots an opportunity to come forward, ask any questions that they have on what's gonna be closed down where, how they operate around, uh, around the reconstruction project, as well as we're gonna talk in a little bit more detail and gain more personal information on moving forward with our hangar improvement project or hangar expansion, or sorry, T-hanger expansion project. So the terminal building, I don't exactly know when it was built, but it is a relatively new building, it is a great facility. I encourage you to come down and take a look at it. Inside the building, we have a rest area for pilots. There is a, a room that they can, they can take a nap in while they're waiting for their clients to take care of business in Muscatine. We have the offices for the fixed base operator, we have a wonderful conference room down there, and a waiting area. It, it really is a, a wonderful facility, and it's open for, for public meetings down there. So if council or any other group in Muscatine is looking for a place to hold meetings, you know, we would encourage them to consider the airport. Our runway, so the green runway is runway six-two-four. It is five thousand five hundred feet long by a hundred feet wide. The crosswind runway is the one in blue, it is four thousand feet long by seventy-five feet wide. Our runway does have the capacity to handle some fairly large jets. I know Steve Boka told me previously that if, if things, if there's an emergency situation in the Quad Cities, whether it be Moline or Davenport, that they can redirect some of the larger aircraft down to Muscatine. So that proximity is, is nice for the additional safety services that we can provide. Our hangers, so in orange are our three T-hanger buildings. In the green, and in the corner of the greens are our corporate hangers that are currently being used for a corporate purpose. And then in purple are the corporate hangers that are under city control or city management. So the corporate hangers, these are the two corporate hangers that are still being utilized by corporations in Muscatine. Just some information on how our corporate, um, hangar agreement works. Corporation comes to the city and say, hey, we would like to build a hangar. Awesome, great, you know they're gonna have a presence in Muscatine for doing so. They... They, we do a land lease agreement with them for $1. The corporation builds the hangar at their expense. They, once completed, that hangar is then turned over to the city, and the city owns it. And their investment in that building pays for their lease. Typically, we do a 20-year lease. One of the corporations in town, just as you see there, that gray, gray part of the building, they just did a significant remodel to their building. And with that investment, we extended their lease further. So anytime that there's an additional improvement done, we, we tend to extend their lease out further for the investment that they made into their hangar.
20 years or 10?
Say that again?
20 or 10? The extension?
The extension.
Usually 20 years. Again, depends on what the improvement is. I mean, if they make a $50,000 improvement to it, we'll, we'll negotiate the extension appropriate for the investment that they made.
In this case, how long was it?
It was 20 years. It was, it was a very significant improvement that they made.
Thank you.
So, these are city corporate hangars. These are hangars that were once occupied by corporations. They discontinued their aviation program, and the city regained management of, of these corporate hangars. These hangars are available if there's other corporations in town that would like to start an aviation presence with their business. We would be more than happy to offer them one of the corporate hangars that we already have available. The hangars that are being managed by the city, the fixed base operator, Carver Arrow, is renting those from the city to store private aircraft in. So, single, single turbine planes and such, such as that. Our T-hangers, so we have three T-hanger buildings. Row four is 40-plus years old. We have eight hangars, and the monthly rent is anywhere from $100 to $135. Depends on the size of the hangar. The ones on the end get a little, be a little bit bigger, the ones in the middle are smaller sized. Row two, 60-plus years old with, with that hangar building. We have six hangars there. Monthly rent is $100, and that starts on July 1st. That was that change that we made a couple months ago. Row three, many of the pilots don't even consider these hangars with the condition that they're in. We do have six of those. The monthly rent on those is $85. Even though they're not in great condition, they still do provide protection to the aircraft.
Minimal. Pretty bad.
And, and many of, many of our hangar tenants went through those, those hangars first, and then were able to, you know, work their way into, to other nicer hangars as they became available. The waitlist, we just added two more people to the waitlist, so currently our waitlist is 18 people. The number one person on the waitlist has been on there since 2008. We have a list of pilots that, or hangar tenants or pilot that are looking to upgrade. Many of them are from row three that are, they're looking for a nicer facility. Or they're in row one, and they're looking for a larger hangar so they can move into a twin turbine aircraft or, or a larger aircraft. And, I should probably mention here, so we have a policy for how we select who is next up and who gets a hangar. The process for doing so are residents that live inside Muscatine city limits, and then it's businesses that are within city limits. And then it goes to residents of Muscatine County, and then businesses of Muscatine County, and then it goes to residents outside of the county, and then businesses outside the county. So that's the, the process that we go through in selecting who comes off the list next. We do look at aircraft size to make sure that, you know, we don't have a light aircraft in a large hangar. We do try to size those appropriately as well, to make sure that the facility is being best utilized. The municipal building, it's the former Han Hangar. Steve Boca's working some stuff in the past, and this was renamed as the municipal building. We use it for storage of, of city, you know, our trucks, our tractors, other things such as that. I did want to point out that, yes, the picture does look bare on the inside. This, this building offers a multitude of abilities. One of the things is, is by not packing it full of stuff, is if we do have an aircraft, a jet that is in town and needs to be hangared overnight, we do have a facility that they can place their aircraft to do so. Without this, they would look to go to Moline or something like that where they could obtain a hangar for the night. So this does offer another service to our aviation community. Beyond that, while the corporation was expanding their hangar, they were able to move their jet into this hangar while they were doing construction on their facility. So allows us a lot of flexibility in our airport operations with this building.
And the equipment that's stored in there is equipment that's used at the airport.
Yes, yep, absolutely. And it's heated, so in the winter, you know, we can keep our trucks warm, so you know we don't have concerns about them breaking as they go out right away. So, I just want to go into a little bit of the economics. The airport is, is very busy. There are a number of businesses, actually many businesses in town that utilize the airport for getting parts in, for flying parts out, for getting employees in, getting employees out. It is used quite, quite regularly. We average in a year 39 activities or operations per day, so that's 39 takeoff or landings. Those are separated into 47% are transient. So it is charters that are flying in to, to drop off individuals for meetings with various corporations in town. They're flying in equipment, they're flying in parts, or they're just popping over to Muscatine to get a hamburger or something like that. I know the pilots talk about that, you know, they'll, they'll spend $75 to go get a cup of coffee, because they just like to get out and fly. Another 47% of that is our local traffic. So the local traffic at the airport that, you know, they're taking off for, for their own pleasure, or they, their business, they take off for the day to go handle their business and they come back. And then 6% of that is air taxi. At our airport, we have 32 based aircraft there. 26 of them are single-engine aircraft. We have two multi-engine. That is increasing. I've heard of at least two pilots that are getting larger aircraft. We do have one jet, one helicopter, and two gliders, which, I thought we had, yeah, more like four or five gliders down there, so.
They stack.
Yes, those... And, and with that, we do have a very active glider club at the airport. We've had in the past, young pilots groups, active at the airport.
There are pilot group that's still occupying part of the one building. They went in and fixed it up seven... How long you been on the airport?
Six years.
Six. So it's been seven years ago? They fixed up this one section, or had worked on it, or are they still down there? I forget what they, what their name. There you go, yeah. Are they still, have a presence on the airport? Okay, alright.
Then I just want to go through some projects. Honestly, I'm probably just going to go through the first two years here and then leave you guys to review the rest of them coming up so we can keep this moving along. So in, in this upcoming fiscal year, the projects that we have outlined is the T-hanger Row Four Design and Phase One Apron Expansion. We will be coming to council next week to get council's permission to submit a grant application to the state for this project. This project consists of the complete design of all phases of the, of the T-hanger Expansion Project, as well as some money to go towards actual apron expansion, so we can start working our way to having that building. Total project estimated cost is $215,000. The local share of that is $32,250. Our federal project for this next fiscal year is our Airport Layout Plan. Essentially, it's detailed information on everything at our facility. The pilots, it's used very regularly by our pilots so that they know what they're flying into. It also needs to be completed before we do any vertical infrastructure. So if we want to build a fuel facility, if we want to build T-hangers, this needs to be completed before we do so. The next year after that, we're continuing our Row Four T-hanger Expansion Project, do an additional apron expansion. And then, our federal project for that year is our Taxway A. So, the taxway that is parallel to the main runway, the runway that we are reconstructing this year, and fiscal year 1718, we will be looking to reconstruct the taxway as well. The revised estimate on that is about a $3 million project to reconstruct that. And we do have at least the verbal commitment from the FAA that, you know, this is a project that they're planning on. How money comes out, we know, we know how that works. Again, and I'll just leave, I'll just go over these other one quickly. Actual construction of the Row Four T-hanger Building, and then we are doing pavement maintenance and rehab on the crosswind runway and taxway. Upgrade of the fuel facility, so we're looking at implementing a fuel facility that is self-fueling, 24-hour self-fueling. And then the city would take over control of the, the fueling so that we would actually be receiving more of the revenue back from that, as well as upgrading our video surveillance system at the airport. We have an old analog system that, it's, yeah, it's, it's in rough shape. So in, in updating that to a digital system would be, would be great.
Adam, do the fixed base operator have to do the fueling now? Or can a pilot fuel and then pay for it inside, or?
Carver Arrow does all the fueling at the airport.
So they have to?
Yep, they have to, yep, they have to fuel the aircraft. They have to pay Carver Arrow for, for their fuel. Carver Arrow sets the rate for, for the fuel. So by doing the, the fuel facility gives us a little more ability to position ourself.
I assume that would be like a credit card at the pump or something?
Yep. And then fiscal year 2021. So the Row Three, the one that's in really rough shape, would be looking at tearing that row down and constructing a new T-hanger building in that row. Because there's not as much concrete work with it, the cost of doing so is significantly cheaper. So where, where do we want to go with the airport? So looking, looking out in the future, we want to support quality infrastructure improvements at the airport, encourage and support aviation business development and corporate aviation programs. So whether it be onsite mechanic or building a convenience store onsite that is, is great for the pilots to stop in and, and get a bottle of water or something to drink, you know, more of a, a rest area for them, or a place for them to stop, as well as continuing to support the corporations in town and as they move forward with aviation programs. Increase traffic at the airport to better compete for state and federal infrastructure funding. Build additional T-hanger facilities to support small business aviation programs, aviation clubs, and regional pilots. That is something I wanted to say, that many of our T-hanger tenants are actually small business owners, or they work for some of the larger businesses in town and use their aircraft very much so for their, their work or their business operations. So it's not, the, the T-hangers are not just general pilots that, you know, have their toy that they go fly on the weekend. Many of them use it for their business operations. And additionally, our goal is to make the Muscatine Municipal Airport 100%, operationally 100% self-sufficient. So that means no subsidy from the general fund. So our T-hanger Expansion Project, again, this goes towards trying to move the airport to being self-sufficient. We're looking at constructing a T-hanger building, 10 to 12 units. The appropriate sized apron expansion. The annual income from this would be roughly $21,000 to $23,000. The total project cost is $700,000 to $800,000. There are grants available for, to complete this project. Currently, we have the project planned for a three-year project with additional cash in the project. It could be completed in two years. There, there are various ways that we're discussing with Greg and how we could possibly look at getting additional cash into the project to complete it sooner. And then also indicating the reconstruction of Row Three in the future. At that point, I'd take any questions if you guys have any?
Does the fixed base operator, can he rebuild engines? Does he have that capability?
They, they do, so they either, they'll bring a mechanic down, so the pilot has to pay to bring a mechanic down from Davenport to do those services at Muscatine, or the aircraft has to be flown to Davenport. So Carver Arrow is the FBO in Davenport as well.
Can they certify airplanes down there? I guess every year, two million years, they recertify them or whatever? Inspections? They can do that?
Yep.
Okay.
You mentioned about the taxway.
Yeah.
And the 6%... Let me go back here, I think you had that.
6% air taxi?
Air taxi. How can we increase that? How can we be more competitive? There's a lot of corporations here that I know that go either to Moline to go to Chicago or go to corporate headquarters to St. Louis or whatever. Either they're flying out of Burlington or of Moline. How do we increase that? What is, what are the thoughts that you would have in that?
How do we increase air, essentially, how do we increase air traffic, or how do we increase corporate presence?
Well, hypothetically, if I knew that I could go through Muscatine to something of that effect out of there, I would like that, either for personal or business.
Yep. I think one of the strategies that we're looking at doing is by building more T-hangers. So by building more T-hangers means that we could, we build two more T-hanger buildings. That's 20 more base aircraft that we have at the airport, bringing us up over, you know, near 60 aircraft that we have hangared at the Muscatine Municipal Airport. So we're increasing our traffic there significantly by doing so. One of the things we mentioned is possibly the business development at the, at the airport. So whether it be through corporate expansion with our airport industrial park, or mechanic onsite, or even a convenience store type operation there that makes Muscatine Municipal Airport a destination. Promoting the clubs, whether it be the glider club, the, the experimental aircraft, aircraft club, will again increase our traffic at the airport. And beyond that, just supporting, supporting the corporations in town that have an interest in, in, in their aviation program corporately, supporting that and helping that move forward as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah?
For those, for the public, I'm Dave Govan, I'm the Community Development Director, of which the airport falls under my purview, of which Adam's doing a fantastic job. I'll do, I'll stop short of clapping for him. But, one of the very important things that needs to be known about the airport and its current path towards how it's interconnected with the commerce of this community is that there's a significant amount of projected traffic that's going to increase to answer somewhat of your question. Because the hotel is which is supported by many of the corporations here that are going elsewhere for their stockholder meetings, their sales meetings, their board of directors meetings, and training and such like that, as well as bringing customers in here to tour plants and such. That, it becomes central, a central place, the airport does, to meeting that commerce and that traffic, introducing Muscatine to a number of people that would never advise be introduced to it. The other important aspect to note that Adam brought up several times, and it's the, the T-hangers and such. The FAA looks everything basically based by the numbers. And the more, more aircraft you have housed here, the more busy you look on paper to them. This will in fact increase traffic, it's no question. It could double easily. But the, a lot of the board members to these larger companies have their own plane. They'll be flying in. The charter flights going in and out will increase. I don't know whether or not that will link itself to something like an Uber flight, unless you want to start a new business.
No. I'm just, I'm just thinking how we can... No, I'm just, I'm just thinking how we can increase that. It's all, that's really what I'm challenging.
Other than that, I believe you can charter flights out of here through the FBO. So I believe there is other opportunities to get, to become air taxi or be.
I would rather see the business come here than go to Burlington or to Moline.
Right. And that's currently what they're doing.
How, how we do that. And I don't know enough because I'm still new and I'm not trying to
No, no.
Be hard on you. I'm just really wanting to understand.
It's a good talking point that you need to understand how important, we're putting ten million dollars in the next three years or so if you looked at those numbers.
That's the whole point. When we start looking at that and the tax dollars potentially for some of the future expansions, I would not like to see thirty-nine again. I would like to say how much is, how's them, how, how we have improved five years. We can say, wow, this is where we were at in two thousand sixteen, this is where we're moving forward in two thousand twenty-one.
Adam's administrated this very, very well, but I'm looking at it from a bigger picture about what does this do for Muscatine? Why is it important to have an airport and what is it, how does it assist us in moving the ball forward? And the more I talk about, more I think about, the more excited I get about it. So I wanted to make sure that that was explained as part of the discussion with respect to the airport. And it will increase in traffic just based off the fact that that stuff's not going to go leave town, it's coming here.
How much advertisement does the, the fixed base operator do as far as for offering charter services to businesses and corporations in this city? I'd, I mean, I'd never see anything, but obviously I'm not going to go fly, take a two by four with me.
Yes, yes. You know, I don't, I don't see, I don't see a lot of outgoing promotion that, I don't know, within the aviation community. Steve, I don't know if you want to speak to that? Yeah. I can repeat it.
You don't really see it advertising the way you think of typical advertisements, but for people who are looking for charters, Carver is very well-known and they are a, I would say, one of the top providers of charter services in Eastern Iowa.
So within, so within the industry, those who are looking for it?
Seems like in the last week, I've seen a couple advertisements for Carver.
So they, they've contact, they, they have contacts within the businesses and in the, in the corporate world in Muscatine? Okay. I figured they did.
Yep. And, and I did want to point out that thirty-nine, remember that's just an average. I mean, there's days down there that we can have two hundred, two hundred plus operations down there and there are days that it's, it's raining and ice on the runway and, you know, nothing happens.
Adam, one other thing I thought of is, and Phil and the, and the board members that have been on the board for, for a while can, can attest that the local government has stayed in close communications with the FAA on the state and regional level. And that's allowed us to, to obtain some funding that I think other cities have not. And we really do have a, a great facility here relative to other towns our size. I mean, that's my opinion, but I, I see they're nodding their heads in agreement. So that's, that's important to note.
Absolutely. I mean, I hear that from a number of pilots, that the facility that we have here in Muscatine is phenomenal. It is top-notch. So, you know, myself and Dave and the Aviation Commission is really taking a, an active role in trying to better the airport, improve the airport, increase the traffic at the airport.
And to your point, a few years back, we educated the, our engineers. GA airports receive an annual allocation, federal funding, and we've been able to dip into discretionary funding to increase our allocations and to get these projects done. That has not historically been done out at the airport. And when did we start doing that? I don't know, three, four years ago?
Probably four or five is when we started bringing up the, the runway reconstruction project with them.
Discretionary funds had never been used prior to that. So it's a, it's a good resource to get additional funds.
Indirectly, that's pertinent to your question too, Santos, that, I mean, there's things being done to make the facility better than, and it is being made better.
And then I'm going to try to be there Saturday. I'd like to.
Okay, awesome.
I'm trying to make it out to all the, all the actual locations. So.
No, we meet, we meet annually with the FAA. We meet annually with the FAA and the FAA representatives at, it used to be the Iowa Aviation Conference. This year, it's the Iowa Public Airports Association. So meet annually with the FAA and meet fairly regularly with the state representatives as well. No less than, I mean, every three to six months, we're meeting with them. And the, the state loves our facility that we have here as well and really looking at continuing their commitment to the airport and supporting what, what we're working towards here. They can really see that we have a vision, that we're trying to move things forward and they're willing to put the money up to help us get there.
Thank you. That was a good presentation.
Any other questions, Brad? Thank you.
Thank you.
You might as well just stay right there because I understand you're going to be our speaker.
I'm going to be passing.
For our proposed urban chicken pilot program.
And I'm going to be passing this off. And Jay, Jay Brady is going to be starting, starting this, this item off this evening. So Jay?
Good evening, Mayor Council. I'm Jay Brady, four seventeen Kindler Avenue. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Muscatine Egg Gatherers. This is a social collective of people interested and supportive of urban chickens. They've been, they've gathered almost five hundred signatures on a petition to demonstrate support. I know there's some people here tonight in support of it and they may want to talk on behalf of this also. You know, the, the, the origin of the, of the chicken pilot program is really to trial a limited number of hen chickens on parcels less than two acres in size. That's really the, the genesis of the, of the program. And this kind of came out of ordinance work that city staff worked on that, that clarified the, the reality that city ordinances only allow chickens on parcels that are greater than two acres in size. And so that discussion kind of culminated in, in October of last year, twenty fifteen. And we came to council and, and requested consideration for, for chickens on smaller parcels. And that's where the idea of a pilot program came about to, to trial it out and see how things might go. And so we've been working with city staff since that time to kind of come up with a program here for your consideration. And I think our viewpoint on, on the pilot program is that it gives some really nice things for the community. It provides a local sourced food supply, namely in the eggs that the, the hens produce. It's consistent with national and state trends towards progressive urban communities. Some communities here in Iowa that allow chickens on smaller parcels include Corville, Johnston, Burlington, Mason City and Iowa City. It also gives a, a nice opportunity for families as a joint activity and then also a learning moment for responsibility as some of the council have pointed out in their prior lifetimes, they had experience dealing with chickens and learned lots of responsibility, of course. And I think it's a socially just approach because frankly, not everybody can afford parcels greater than two acres in town. So this gives some people that are maybe not quite as economically advantaged some opportunities to, to participate in this type of, of program. And then it also, of course, allows the community to look at the concepts of urban chickens on smaller parcels and see if there's in fact major issues that arise out of this. So we really would like to, to urge you to give the trial program a chance and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
So in your pilot program, you're requesting four hens allowed per single dwelling?
Adam, Adam was going to run.
That's where Adam wants to.
Adam's part two.
Oh, okay. Adam will go over the, the details of the program. I'm sorry, I should have said that.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
And then if there are questions that, that he can't address, I'm certainly happy to try to answer.
Who drafted the pilot program?
It was jointly done.
Okay. All right. So I'm sorry, go ahead then.
Jay.
All right. So yeah, I'm going to run through the, kind of some of the highlights of the, the urban chicken pilot program. Again, this was in collaboration with the group and city staff, myself, Andrew, Dave, Greg. Been, been over this many times to make sure that we covered at least the issues that were brought to us by council, issues that were brought to us by the community and also making sure that we were doing what was best for the egg gatherers group as well. All right. So enrollment. We will start with twenty-five permits on a first come, first served basis for qualifying participants. They have to complete a mandatory chicken rearing class. This class is provided by the Muscatine ISU Extension. Their permit is limited to no more than four hens. And the application is submitted to the Community Development Office, reviewed by staff and approved if all qualifications are met. Eligibility for this pilot program, it is only for single-family residents. You must not have a past history of nuisance issues, so not mowing your yard, not shoveling your sidewalk. No past history of animal violations. No multifamily or rental properties will be allowed for this pilot program. And again, you must complete the educational chicken rearing class. Enclosures. Enclosures must be located fifteen feet from the property line and not located in the front yard. So not located beyond the envelope of the house. The coop must be built with solid walls and roof suitable for year-round, year-round keeping or housing of the hens. Must be built of appropriate building materials and well-ventilated, and this is as determined by the Community Development Department. With this being a pilot program, it does allow us a lot of flexibility in making sure that they're built to an acceptable level. The cubes must be lockable to keep the chickens in and predators out. All enclosures must be secured to prevent accidental release of the hens. Enclosures continued. The enclosures must be kept in a sanitary condition, free of offensive odors and accumulation of waste. The coop must provide at least two square feet of floor area and two vertical feet of clearance per hen. So if you have four hens, you get eight square feet. The minimum floor area has to be two feet by four feet. And again, with that two-foot minimum vertical clearance. And just as some examples on what these could look like, they could be extravagant. They could be more simple. They could be ones that you buy from Blaine's or Orshlin's. Or they can be, you know, really up there. So the keeping of the hens. So all hens must be banded with a numbered leg band. Hen shall have access to clean food and water at all times. Hen shall not have access to, sorry, shit, hens shall have access to outdoor enclosures. There are no roosters, no other fowl such as ducks or turkeys and nor, no outdoor slaughtering is allowed either. Enforcement. So animal control is first respondents, or they will first respond to any complaints. And then staff will address the, the issue thereafter. So if it's an animal welfare issue, then animal control will take care of it. If it's zoning or code compliance issue, then the Community Development Staff will take care of it. Participants give the city the right to enter the participant's yard to investigate complaints or to abate any nuisance conditions. The city may utilize various means of enforcement, whether it be warnings or ultimately revoking the permit and removing the hens. And the city retains the right to revoke the permit or cancel the pilot program at any time for any reason. Because this is a pilot program and does go against city code, we want to have maximum flexibility in, in addressing any issues with the pilot program going forward. Just some other program details. There is an annual permit. The first permit is twenty-five dollars with a ten-dollar annual renewal. New leg bands cost, sorry, I'll go back. With your first permit, you do receive four leg bands for your chickens. So you do, are provided your four leg bands. New leg bands thereafter are five dollars each. Hen shall not be kept in the dwelling. Hen enclosure shall not be apart or attached to any dwelling or accessory structure. And coops are considered to be accessory structures and will have to meet accessory structure limits as provided in city code. With that, that is a general overview of the regulatory side of the pilot program. I will answer any questions about the regulatory or the regulations within the pilot program. And Jay and his group can answer any questions that I can't answer.
The leg bands, are they, are they numbered sequentially or something so we know who's got what chickens?
Yep, absolutely. And with our new inspection software that our Community Development Department is implementing, both our department and PD will have access to who, which properties have chickens. They can see which numbers are supposed to go there. They can record any complaints that they have on those properties so that both our department and PD can keep in information data so we can address any issues as they come up. And if one does get loose, then we can make sure it gets back to where it belongs.
Adam, maybe you don't know, but these other communities that have something similar, how long have they had them? And, and how widespread is it? I mean, we're talking twenty-five in this trial. I mean, is that going to go to five hundred or, I mean, or? Anybody know? Because I, I got to admit, I got a call from a resident that said there was chickens near his place here in the city and the odors were, were not good and especially in warm weather. I'm just trying to sort things out in my mind here.
Yeah, I think that's a good, it's all good questions. You know, a number of these communities have had, had these for quite a number of years. Iowa City, you know, I think was about two years ago and theirs is very restrictive. I'm not really sure that there's a lot of people that have taken advantage of it because it is so restrictive. There are and have been coops and chickens in Muscatine for a number of years in parts of the community that are less than two acres. And, and so I think that's part of the genesis of this pilot is that now you can bring those people in and, and get them properly monitored and regulated. So if there are issues, they can be addressed. When I, when I think about chickens, you know, I know that it seems like a romantic ideal. And, and there are people that, that want to get involved and, and they don't know quite what they're getting into. And that's why we, staff suggested and we concur with the idea of the chicken rearing class just so people can know what they get into. And it's not, there are some upfront costs. So I mean, you got a coop that, you know, some of those are pretty, pretty elaborate coop setups. But, you know, you're going to have to, you're going to probably have several hundred dollars in a coop and an enclosure, the chickens, the food, the bedding and that type of thing. So it, it's not something that I, I don't think you're going to see just tremendous numbers of people flocking, pardon the pun, to the, that wasn't. To, to, to put chickens in their backyard. But there's a lot of parcels in town that are sizable, that are, are backed up against ravines or what have you that, you know, that would be conducive to this. So I, I think you should try it and see. I don't expect that there's just going to be people pounding on the doors to, to, to get this. And, and, and if there is a lot of demand, then, then we can report that back to staff. And, and then you can, you know, you can consider that in the context of, of the situation and, and decide where you want to go with it.
So on, on the, the regulations here, you can't be in the front yard, but you got to be located fifteen feet from property line. This could technically be in the. This could technically be in the side yard of somebody's house, visible from the street.
That I wouldn't like. It being in the side yard.
Yep. And, and as it's written, it just has to be within 15 feet from side yard, rear yard, and not, not in the front yard.
So basically anybody's size yard. It can be a really small yard.
If you have, so.
Thirty-three.
The limiting factor is, is the setback. So if you can't meet the setbacks, then you're not, the property's not eligible for participation in the pilot program.
I'd like to have the pilot program specifically say, "No roosters."
It does say, it does say, "No roosters."
This issue of it just says, "Hens."
No, it says, "No roosters."
It specifically says, "No roosters."
Yeah, it says, "No roosters."
At least the slide says, "No roosters."
I assume the part where the hens will have access to outdoor, the outdoor enclosure, et cetera, is kind of animal welfare type of a clause. So I don't know if you wanna specify the duration of the access, you know, maybe the, you know, people try to get around zoning, aren't, so they may open the door five minutes out of the day, you know, try to meet the requirements. So I don't know if you have some sort of a minimum, minimum time where they might have access. And then there are some neighborhoods that I know of in Muscatine that the neighbor probably wouldn't wanna be sitting in his backyard looking at a chicken coop over on one side of him or the other. So I don't know if you're, you might wanna somehow try to screen the coop from the neighbor's view. And you, how you address odor control, I don't know, because that's, that's a hard thing to contain. And waste disposal, it says here, you know, you have to clean the coop, et cetera. But what do you do with it? I don't know if the landfill wants it in the landfill, the sewer plant wants it flushed down the toilet. Do they take animal waste in those facilities? That's one thing, you know, there's. I had my share when I was a kid of scooping out chicken coops, and it's not pleasant. And so what do you do with what you scoop out? There may be some state or whatever regulations that might indicate what you can do with that stuff. I don't know. Anyway, those are some of the comments that I had a concern about, that you may have to address.
Question for you. In my particular ward, seemingly that there's chickens, plural chickens, numerous chickens, more than four in a household. How are we gonna handle the regulation of that? Who's gonna go down and tell them four's max, that you're gonna have to do something else with, with the balance of them?
Community Development Office.
Yep, so. With, with, if this pilot program does go in place, then we would across, across the community be more strictly enforcing not having chickens, or if you do have chickens, you have to meet all parameters of the pilot program. Just like with many of our other community development, whether it be nuisance, like we do do active, actively look for nuisance issues. But we will address it on a complaint basis. So if we get a complaint from a neighbor that, hey, they have 25 hens running around, we'll, we'll, we'll then investigate and address the issue as it is.
Is this gonna be complaint-driven, or are we gonna have an inspector?
It will be spot monitored, but we do not want to dedicate a significant amount of staff time to consistently continually monitor this program. We will address the issues as, as complaints arise. Or we are, I guess in putting the pilot together, we are recommending that we address them as complaints are submitted. And then spot check them as time allows.
Okay, so I have two questions. Comparatively to the other cities, is the four-hen program that you allow similar to what we're trying to put in the pilot program? And then my next question is, how long do you wanna do this pilot program? And then I'd like for you to come back after a few months to let us know how we're doing with the complaints, how much time. I don't wanna have officers going out there looking at it. And we had 85 complaints of the 25 hypothetically. And that's, for a $25 permit, that's obviously not gonna be something that's gonna give us a, a good feeling for me.
Yeah. So, so first off, you know, this is, at least from a staff standpoint, we, we are neutral in this. We neither take it in favor or against it. It very much is a council decision. Any of these regulations or standards that are set forth in the pilot program are completely up to council's discretion on, on what they want to implement in this pilot program. In regards to other communities, I believe other communities are anywhere from six to four. I don't, I don't know of any four to six. I, I don't know of any that, that go beyond the six. And as for the, the duration of the pilot program, the Egg Gatherers Group has asked for a two-year pilot program and then to consider it at the end of the, the two-year period on whether we want to change our city code and ordinances to allow for this or whether the city council would like to go in a different direction. And again, it's within the proposed Muscatine Urban Chicken Pilot Program, city council has the ability to revoke any individual permit at any time and also revoke the entire program at any time. An updating council on stats and where we're at, we can do at any time and do regularly in the beginning, if that's what council would, would prefer.
When we did the street dining program pilot, it was one year. Is there some magic or logic to two years?
Yeah, actually, there is. The, the first thing is, is the investment that people make to, to get into this. And then the second part is, is that you don't really get anything, if you, if you start from, from chicks, you know, it's, it's at least six months before you have any eggs that are, that are coming. So there's, there's a period of time where if people are just getting into this type of activity, that, you know, you really don't have any experience as a community because the chick, the chicks are growing up. You know, people have to get the class, we have to get the class arranged and all that type of thing. So there's, there's, it's gonna be kind of a slow start to the program. And, and so that's where we kind of came up with the two-year notion.
How many people, Jay, do you have in your egg gatherers group? You got 500 signatures, you said.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not the person that holds the counts. I don't, I don't know how many.
So I mean, do you have, do you have 25 people?
It's more of a social group, so I can't give you actual numbers, but I can say 25.
Yeah, twenty-five, thirty people.
So you don't think you're gonna have a lot of trouble filling those 25 permits?
I'll be, I'm gonna be frankly, I'm curious to see. I, I don't, I don't honestly know if, you know. Like I say, it's a romantic ideal, and then when people take the class and they start learning about it, it, it may be eight people. You know, I, I'm gonna be curious to see what the participation is.
You're gonna be one of them?
You're gonna be one of them?
Well, we've had chickens before, so we would, we would like to do that again, yes.
Any other questions for Jay or Adam?
I just, I, I'm not necessarily really excited about this because of the comments I've heard from residents. Giving it a one-year trial period, I thought that's where we were going. Talk about an investment. You wanna talk to the owner of Boonies to find out how much that portable deck cost to put together? And I had nothing to do with that, by the way. But the finances involved was considerable compared to getting some chickens in a coop, unless you pick up the thousand-dollar coop that can be purchased at one of the stores. So I guess I'm still, I'm still on the fence. And, and it's, and it's basically been because of, lack of a pun, foul odor coming from the neighbor's property that somebody said they had chickens. So there is at least one person I know of in Muscatine that has them. And the neighbors have, have complained. They haven't complained officially yet, but I'm assuming they will.
So I, I'm just gonna comment, and I, the Boonies investment is more from a business standpoint. This is obviously from a resident's standpoint.
No, I understand that.
So I, I am more in agreement of a 12-month to a potentially 18, but I'm, I'm kinda hesitant of the two-year. I don't, I know you can buy chickens pretty cheap. And if they wanna raise them from chicks, that's a little different. But there's a program that we would have to look at the results relatively soon after the program's been officially and the people have gone through the class. That's my challenge personally, so.
What if we'd make it that we'd have a formal review after 12 months and then go from there?
I wanna know after six months, how they're doing.
A review every six months.
I wanna know how complaints, do we have any, if we've, if we've cleaned out the ones that are in, in the city now?
Well, and the other thing is, if, if, I don't wanna wait six months before we have a, a review that suddenly we have 28, 28 or whatever chicken, chicken families in town. And we've got 75 to 100 complaints on those families within the first month for one reason or another. I don't wanna wait six, have to, I'll, so we'll, we'll look at this in six months.
I, I'm just, I'm just thinking that we wanna get it sooner than the year is all I'm getting at. So if it's, if it's, if it's 90 days after they, they present the class to have the group come up here and give us some ideas of where we're at, the goods and the bads and the uglies, then we'll do that.
There you go.
It's, it's, it's probably something that we'll have to work out and, and come up with an idea as far as the timing goes, but.
As a pilot program, it can be extremely flexible. Tonight, we'd like to, to know if there's council's consensus bring forward for, for consideration. But it can be extremely flexible as a pilot program. So that's the benefit of trying this out before we actually adopt the ordinance.
So in the ordinance, would we, would that be where we would be clarifying the 18-month or the 12-month?
No, no, as a, not as a trial program. You'd essentially be adopting the parameters and any changes that you'd like to make. And that, that's what we would utilize simply as a trial program. The ordinance would come if at the end of that 18-month period or whatever period the council determined that, that they would like to continue with the program and adopt an official ordinance. This gives us maximum flexibility over that time period to adjust the program, to end the program, or.
Or give it another six-month trial.
Or give it another six-month trial, exactly.
Yeah, we're not changing codes, so we can revoke that trial provision too.
After nine days.
If it's not working, we stop it, you know, and.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, quick question. Have you discussed this with the police department so they know the animal control will be involved?
Yes, they, they know the animal control. Right, Phil? And that was the response I got.
It might be kind of fun to watch, you know, if the chickens get, get loose, it says you round them up real quick. That would be fun to watch.
Well, we have had a, a loose pig the past couple of years.
Well, some of them. Need a collar and a leash on them maybe or something, you know.
Chicken for a walk day.
Yeah, let's give it a whirl.
Okay.
Bring it back for consideration?
Yes.
Okay. We'll take, discuss the items tonight, bring it back for consideration. Council can always make amendments that night as well, so.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Certainly. Come up. State your name and address again.
Kurt Piper, 216 Roscoe. I just wanted to address some of the things that the council brought up tonight too. Couple things, especially on waste, odor, things of that nature. First of all, most urban chicken farmers are very environmentally conscious. A lot of them do composting, things of that nature. From a cost standpoint, you know, you're not talking about buying the cheap plywood $300 coop that you get down at Farm and Fleet. Those are not gonna house chickens in Iowa all year long. You know, we're talking about investing over a thousand dollars just to raise four chickens here within town. You know, and from a smell standpoint and things of that nature, you know, I'm a dog owner. I also have an indoor cat. But we have dogs and cats running loose all over the town we don't seem to have a problem with. We have plenty of citizens who don't clean up after their dogs and cats. As a dog owner, I know exactly what dogs smell like compared to chickens smell like, you know. It seems like this is kind of an unfair thing because we have one citizen complaining about chicken smell. You know, I can walk up and down my neighborhood and complain about all my neighbors who don't clean up after their dogs about the same smell as well. I guess I'm just asking that you give the urban chicken farmers a chance to prove that we are socially responsible, we can take care of our chickens. And, you know, this topic seems to be keep rolling over and over and over again. I guess urban farmers are just kind to a point. We would just simply like the committee to say tonight, yes. Please move forward with the pilot. Give us a chance. Spring is here. We want to get our chickens. We wanna get our coops built. You know, this keeps going on, and I guess I'd just like to see some resolve tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piper.
So I mean, we, we can, I mean, we are gonna go to the next meeting.
There's no action tonight. Action would be under the normal, or the regular session.
Yeah, so it's not like that. So basically, we can't make any, any decisions further than what we're already putting it on the table for the next one. So that'll be in, how, two weeks?
Next week.
Next week.
Okay.
Go right ahead. Please remind us of your name and.
Sure. Angie Overton. I live at 714, just up the street on Foleum from you folks. I am not part of the egg consortium. I didn't even know there was one here. I can tell you my interest comes from. I've been, I've lived in Muscatine off and on throughout my whole entire life. Have moved back here three years ago after my dad lost his wife of 25 years. We do live in town. This is gonna be great therapy for him. He's very excited about it. I didn't know there was an ordinance that we couldn't have chickens in town. So when I found out there was, I kinda did a screeching halt, and I was like, oh no, you know, now what do we do? I can tell you that as a farm girl, from being from Muscatine, Iowa, that I'm not running into this thinking this is just a whim for me. I know the benefits that come with it. I can tell you and agree with the gentleman from Roscoe that dog feces is worse than chicken coop feces. I have, the other thing that comes from having a chicken coop also, I have a garden. I'm very excited with the, the thought of what it will do for my garden. Also, this last week, I was in New Orleans, I'm a nurse, at a convention and was sitting there talking about the excitement that was building with this before I knew that we couldn't do it yet. And one of the gals from San Francisco goes, "Oh, I have four hens." I said, "In San Francisco?" She goes, "Yeah." And she goes, "We just have a very small," it's, she said, "It's like 200 by 300-foot yard in the back." And she said unwillingly, she goes, "Yes, and we have two roosters that we're not supposed to have that we bring in every morning at 3 o'clock and quiet them down." I can guarantee we will not have roosters. But the other thing, if you're worried about, you know, as chickens fly, as you say, there are breeds that don't fly. The other consideration I want you to think about when you start putting limitations on timeframes, remember, it takes six weeks before a chick even goes, starts growing feathers. So you're talking about having them in an incubator, and then you want us to come three months after they're out of the incubator. You're not even gonna have an idea. And then also to remember that during the winter months, chickens don't roost eggs. And, you know, some chickens cluck more than other chickens. And those are all things that those of us that have raised chickens already know. So hopefully, we won't have any loghorns running around and flying around Muscatine, Iowa. But I wanna tell you, just as not being part of, or knowing about this group, I'm like gonna get plugged in now 'cause I'm very excited, that there's lots of benefits that come, not even just from the responsibility of children raising them. As far as my family, it's important, I know what it's like to have a farm fresh egg. Oh, if you ever crack an egg in the morning, it's awesome. But also the fact that I'll know what's, I'm feeding my chickens. I'll have hands-on, there's only gonna be four, three or four in my household. I will know that if, you know, I know the effluence. I will know that if, you know, I know the influenza, or not influenza, hello, the ovarian flu is a big thing, I'm very in tune to what that is. I can tell you, most people that wanna have chickens are gonna research it out. I guess going forward, that's about all I'd like to say, but please, please, consider this, this is gonna be great therapy for my 80, 88-year-old dad, he's very excited, and as a family, we think this is actually a healthy choice for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Overton. Moving on to the next thing on the agenda, we have a request to approve a street closure. This request comes from Colachi Construction for the closure of East Second Street at the 600 block, beginning the morning of April 18th, 2016. The street would reopen on April 22nd, 2016. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So move.
Thank you.
Second, your honor.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question, will Oak Street remain open?
My understanding is, yes, this is just temporary for the, the overhead work.
I don't know whether, whether barricade would be put up before or after Oak Street, so if you come down Mississippi Drive from the bridge, can you go up Oak Street to Fifth and...
My understanding is Oak Street would be open.
Okay. Is there gonna be a, a posted detour route or anything like that?
Everybody but Alan. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to number seven on the agenda, Phil, do you have any comments to share?
Nope.
Scott?
Just one reminder that spring cleanup week is April 25th, so, coming up soon, so it's a good service that we offer.
Absolutely. Thank you, Scott. Bob?
No comments tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alan?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Santos?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Tom?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Mike?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Staff, anything?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. I had just a few things. First of all, I would like to congratulate our solid waste manager, Laura Leges, who was nomin, or who actually was chosen as volunteer of the year for our local Muscatine Chamber of Commerce, quite an honor, we're proud of that. Next, I would like to share that I've had a couple of people, several different people actually approached me to talk about, they would like to talk to council down the road about putting in some pickleball courts behind MCC. And then I had several children, students, send me some letters asking us, once again, to reconsider the pit bull ban. And then finally, I've had a large group of people contact me again and ask me to bring up again the parking meters perhaps being hooded during the food pantry handout time, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00, as well as perhaps assigning two of those parking meters in front of the county building there for our veterans, so that they can go in and, and take care of business at the Veterans Administration. And then, just two other things, I am planning a mayor's special task force that I'm putting together, I'm pretty well through that, to look into the form of our local government, including a charter review. The purpose of this is to determine the people's wishes and verify that their local government actually has the form that, of their choice, the form that they wanted to have, if not, perhaps coming and making some recommendations to council. To that end, I'm starting a group called Coffee with Mayor, the last third, two, the last Saturday of each month, at Happy Joe's, I'm inviting everyone to come, 9:00 to 10:30. We'll be discussing things like the open meetings laws, openings that we currently have in our boards and commissions, and, including the mayor's special task force. So thank you all for coming, and we are adjourned. Oh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you, Alan. Have a good evening.
Welcome to you, Santos.
You were looking at Santos?